Good evening. Welcome to our regular session, board meeting for August 16, 2023. Give me a moment. Saving the earth by not printing this out today. Or I forgot, either way. Like to welcome everybody who's joining us here in the room tonight. Viewing online or listening online. Reminder that the meeting is being recorded both in audio and video format. As always, there is a public comment section. If you are in the room tonight and would like to come up and make comments to the board. Please sign up on the sign in sheet at the executive assistance desk over here at the front of the room. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature on the app. I believe it's at the top of the app, maybe at the bottom on Zoom, sorry. If each member who is wishing to speak. Shall provide their name and address. We would ask that you direct comments to the board only. And you have a maximum of five minutes to make those comments. A reminder that all comments are public. The board cautions any visitor to not disclose confidential account information. Nor disclose account information about an account that is not in your name. Staff will not be able to provide individual account information or history in an open meeting for confidentiality reasons. Members of the public may also call or email BPU with questions or concerns. Tonight's agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website on the board meetings tab. If you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. Like to remind everyone, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors and we will conduct the meetings accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully toward each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue or question to the board only. And we'll determine staff involvement from there. Attendees shall refrain from side conversations or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussions are necessary, please take them outside of the boardroom into the hall. If any of the above rules are breached during the meeting. Individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. I am Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Three and current Board President. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, General Manager. David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two. Tom Groneman, Second District and current Board Vice President. Bob Mylan, First District and current Board Secretary. Jeff Bryant, Third District. Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One. And Wendy Green, our Senior Counsel. Like to remind everybody, put your phones on silent. And also reminder that microphones are all throughout the room. They are very sensitive. They can pick up and record comments from anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, I ask you to please rise and join me in the reciting of our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, can I get roll call, please?
Roll call Haley.
Present.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda, I'll ask if there are any corrections that need to be made to it.
I move to approve this evening's agenda.
This is Jeff, I second.
The, the motion to approve tonight's agenda has been moved in second and roll call, please.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Do I, before I here entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the work session of August 2nd, 2023. Are there any corrections that need to be made?
So moved to accept the minutes, approve the minutes of the work session of August 2nd.
I second.
It's been moved in second and roll call, please.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Yeah. For I asked for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of August 2nd, 2023, I'll ask if there are any corrections that need to be made. Hearing none?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
Tom, I second.
The motion to approve the minutes of the regular session agenda or regular session of August 2nd, 2023 have been moved in second and roll call, please.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Mr. Johnson, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Haley, Kaylee, I'm sorry. Kaylee, are there anybody signed up? Thank you. Looking at, we've only got one Rob, so if you can unmute him, Ty Gorman. If you could state your name and address for the record and have five minutes.
Thank you. This is Ty Gorman, 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, KCK. Thank you for your time. First want to thank the board for their attention on the, the low income rebate and the working session. And, and ameliorating some of that effect of the rate hike on, on our most vulnerable neighbors here, KCK and. And also the, the discussion after that on, on implementation and the role of the board. And, and also I want to thank the staff. There's a lot of great staff at BPU and folks, folks working on that. So. Want to thank, thank those folks too. The discussion there on, on what the board should be focused on was, I thought was really interesting and just wanted to share that. You know, I've worked with utilities around the country and some municipal, some municipal, excuse me, municipal utilities and. There seems to be some folks saying that the board's role is to approve a budget, approve things that the utilities manager and management staff need approved and. And to hire and fire the executive director and that's it. That is not true. The, the role of the board and, and most of the utilities and, and, and the good board members and all utilities I worked with. Focus on policies and procedures. And, and when they're asked to do things to, to address a budget or a rate case or an integrated resource plan. Even if they're not, you know, experts on budget or utility finance or energy market development, they. Can ask for assumptions on behalf of the people. They ask for a process that includes the people and assumptions. That the utilities making in those models. So board members and utility staff can and should work together on, on drafting and approving new policies that can benefit the. Most vulnerable folks in the community who are voting the board in. Instead of some of the more conservative policies that a, a utility staff would be obligated to bring forward. They set the priorities basically, and they can set them on behalf of the people. In a way that, you know, a utility staff member might need to present, for example, of a very high. Cash reserve or something like that, that it's a very investment best practice type of issue that finance. Companies and investors would ask for, but the board can set priorities to change the policies. I want to give two examples real quick of that, that I hope the board can engage in. One was the, the, the great, you know, reference to the homes rebate program and a lot of these other federal programs that are being administered through the state or direct federal. Competitive grants that are available to municipal utilities, those. Can be kind of transparently presented through, to the board and, and, and through the board to the public. So, and the implementation of those, the policies around implementation. On how to get those dollars to our most vulnerable customers can. Be facilitated by the board and should be. The, the integrated resource plan should have a public process that is facilitated by the board. And that brings in third party. Modeling and third party assumptions to double check what the. You know, what, what staff, it's, you know, just basic accountability. That's what. Most integrated resource plans have that, you know, different assumptions in the model.
We have one minute remaining.
So. I, I also, you know, wanted to draw attention to how great it would be to have the, the BPU be an implementer of. These other assistance programs and be able to fold all of this benefit that can come from the federal and state programs into. The BPU bill and the, and the, and the low income rebate program such as you presented it. Today. So those low income programs are great. I'm so glad you're, you're, you're focusing on that. As other programs come through, it's really hard to reach out to people, reach out to low income folks and then get the information you need to identify the people who need it most. And the connections and the utility has that information. It's a repository of information and connection that can't really be rivaled a lot of times and. They're great implementing an outreach agent and an automatic enrollment agent for a lot of this. Low income rebate and incentive and efficiency and.
Bad as time investment.
So I thank you for your time and hope you'll take that consideration and, and reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
Rob, I don't see anyone else waiting. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on past public comments to the general manager staff reports. First, I'll ask Dennis to come up and give a HR safety and security update.
Good evening, Madam President and distinguished board members. I'm Dennis Dumovich. I'm the HR Director. Here at the Board of Public Utilities. We're here to update you regarding our safety and security programs. I have two of our key team members here tonight with us. One's Jeff Rye. Jeff is our Safety and Security Manager. Jeff's been with BPU for two years. Prior to this, he had over 20 years with UPS. As the hub manager here in the KCK facility and. For those of you that don't know, UPS is really known worldwide for their safety programs. And so. Been great having Jeff here with the BPU. Also, we have with us Teresa Steele. Teresa's been here about 10 years. She's our Safety and Work Comp Specialist. Here at BPU, prior to this, she was with Aquila. And served in a, their legal department there at Aquila. Teresa's our, leads our safety training programs and our work comp programs. Some of the objectives that we have for our safety program here at BPU. Is number one, we wanted to get our employees bought into our safety program. We'd kind of drifted from that a little bit and we wanted to engage them again. So we created committees. At the grassroots level so that they can self govern their programs and. We in HR would provide guidance from that perspective. Committees bring their ideas to the executive committee that would approve. Any funding or ideas that they have with, with regard to safety equipment and changes of those programs. Additionally, we send out a daily motivational message from HR. As well as a daily safety focus. That goes to every supervisor at BPU. And they're asked to have discussions with their teams about, in particular, our safety every day. You know, one of the things that Jeff brought to us from UPS is. What is the most important stop you have every day? And it's the stop at home at the end of the day being safe. So that's our, one of the things we're most concerned about. We also do monthly trainings. Jeff and Teresa conduct those monthly safety trainings. We tie sometimes HR programs into that as well. We started recording near misses. That was something we didn't really do at BPU, but. Rather than just tracking injuries and the cost of injuries, we now record near misses. And with that information. We study those near misses for improvements. And that's where our committees really. Are very important because they know the day to day operations. And when we have a near miss, they make recommendations so that we can be a safer organization. And then in the field, our goal in HR is to be seen more all the time. And Jeff, in particular, and Teresa as well, are out in the field. Almost every single day rewarding employees when they see good behavior. You know, we, we carry a $5 QuickTrip gift card and when he pulls up on a, on a site or they do pull up on a site and everybody's wearing their personal. Protection equipment and they're doing the right things, you know, we'll reward them with a $5 QuickTrip gift card so that, you know, they, they have something that. That says, hey, you're doing a good job. Some of the objectives with our security program, number one, we wanted to utilize technology. Our technology at BPU with regard to safety. A few years ago really. Wasn't focused on. We've added a bunch of new cameras, the new technology that goes with that. We've redesigned our control center. Our security control center out at Water Engineering. We've improved our access to our gates so that they're more secure. We've established relationships with the fire department and the police department so that when we, they get a call from us from our security team. They know what they're going into. We utilize our cameras to see what issues are out there. So. We have a substation that somebody's broken into. We have cameras that we never had them before, but we have cameras now. That can see what's going on so that an employee or one of our security team doesn't walk into a bad situation. They see a bad situation on the camera, we call 911. And we get our police department out there. So those are a lot of the things that we're doing. And because of this automation. And the adjustments we've been able to make, we make, we save over a half a million dollars a year in security costs. By investing in that capital equipment initially, we have maintenance equipment that we do as well that we purchase. But we are saving a half a million dollars on security and we're more secure than we've ever been at this utility. So we're really focused on that. And then our work comp injuries year to date are way down. Our accidents, vehicle accidents are way down and that's what these guys are going to talk to you about. So. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jeff and Teresa. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing us this time tonight. Greatly appreciated. Teresa and I work on this every day of the week. And of course, our legal liability and financial liability and both security and work comp are enormous. So we've worked very hard and our goal is to get people involved across the utility. And that's what we really worked on is that involvement and you can talk and create policies as much as you want. But unless people buy into them and it's communicated and it's right there in front of them all the time, you'll never be successful with it. So. I'm going to follow up with some of what Dennis had just talked about. Each facility, all the large facilities have their own safety committee. They have elected officers that they were elected by their peers. Nerman, they meet monthly. It's normally about an hour meeting. They stay very focused. Nerman Power does meet more frequently than that. They had more injuries than anyone else or any other facility. And so they, they have, they call them weekly EPROM meetings. And they talk about all the things that could be a danger or be a risk in, at Nerman. We go to every meeting and the purpose of that is just more or less to keep them on track. We want to make sure that the. The employees are, they're all self-directed, employee directed. And so we don't want to step in and give them the ideas. We want them to evolve and come up with the ideas. So. Anyway, we only interfere if we have to or if we're asked to. So with that, Teresa.
Also with our teams, we have, not only do we have a team at each location, but we also have. A safety committee that is all, that encompasses all of the utility. And so. Each of those teams sends somebody to the committee. And so we meet with that once a, a month. And so we, we figure out a lot of things that might affect one division, might be something that is affecting somebody else. And we might not have put that together until we get together as a committee. One of the things that we came up with through the safety committee was the 10 codes. And the 10 codes are a way for us to keep a consistent communication with our radios. So a lot of these are pretty self-explanatory. Whenever, on occasion, we have our water department has to enter a residence. So there's a 10 code for that and an exit residence. But the ones that we focus on most is the 1099 down at the bottom. You'll see the 1099 is an unsafe call 911 code. And then we also have a 1033, which is an emergency meeting. The purpose behind those is the 10, the 1099 is if somebody has, say for instance, entered a residence and, and we haven't heard from them in 10 or 15 minutes. We may radio them. They can either give us a code that says they've exited the residence. Or if they're under duress, they might say, yeah, this is a 1099 and our dispatchers know where they are. So they know at that point to send 911 services immediately to where that location is. The 1033 code is a code that we use so that if we have something that's happening near one of our facilities, we give that 1033 code. With meeting instructions so that they know not to go back there. We had a shooting near Muncie. And we didn't want our employees to be going into that building. So we gave a 1033 code and told them to meet at City Park. So the location always, could always change and where those 1033 codes are happening. Could be anywhere in the city, but that keeps our employees safe and away from where the emergency is happening. We recently did a, a practice drill on the 1033 and we had all of the people from. The Muncie and from the service center meet at City Park and that went over very well. The management at both facilities was out there and encouraged them to. To show up and be counted and they took a role out there and it all worked out really well.
One thing that we've done, last year we had several backing crashes. And one, so we talked about what we were going to do to reduce the number of crashes and goal was it, get out and look. And the backing crashes can be very expensive. The liability once again is way up there. And we talked about all the different things that we could do to reduce them. And the committee came up with this simple sticker. And also this is a simple reminder to walk around your vehicle before you leave. So with that, the good news is, is that since the implementation of goal and putting the magnets on, we've only had two backing crashes. Last year we had 16 and of those eight were in water and eight were in electric. So we've reduced them dramatically. By just simple communication is what it comes down to. If you look at our vehicle crashes, we had 36 last year. 16 of those were the backing crashes. And so far this year, only 10 crashes year to date. And two of those were backing and they were the only two of the 10 that we were actually at fault on. The other eight, we were hit by other vehicles. One thing too, that the operators are doing now, they're, they call it benching and it's to open the hole up more and it reduces the risk of cave ins. But one thing it really does is it gives them a place to put their tools. When they're down in a hole and they're reaching above and you've got a three pound hammer above your head and you're bent over, the risk goes up. So. Once again, it's just another one of many things that will reduce the amount of injuries that occur. Did you want to talk about this one? Okay, so they've used these on the electric side for a while. Then now we've incorporated these into Muncie and they're manhole, they're magnetic dollies. And so they are, they're electric and, or battery powered actually, but. When you power it up, it will take that lid off and it reduces the risk of somebody getting their hand in there and getting it caught. And we've had some bad injuries over the years. And we provide monthly safety training to all employees. And if we are not the expert in that particular area, we'll bring somebody in. But Teresa and I generally do those.
So the monthly safety training classes are things that we've been doing since right after I first started here. We kind of freshened it up a little bit and gave it a different look. Our safety historically has been more reactive where we look at something that happened after somebody's been injured or, or something's happened. And now we're being more proactive with that. And so coming out and doing these safety training classes has been really helpful. Some of the things that we've done is just general safety where we've talked to. Employees about things that might impact them here at work and also at home. We try to make that message something that we can share throughout the utility. And like Jeff said, sometimes we have to bring in professionals of other caliber to do that. But we're trained on a lot of stuff ourselves. I can do, I'm authorized to teach OSHA classes and I also carry a certification to teach CPR classes. So there are things that we do here in-house that, that we do very well.
Yeah, the, like in the confined space, one thing that we found is we didn't have the proper equipment to get somebody out of a hole. And we had a water worker to where there was a valve basically that broke down in the manhole. When it did. The hole filled up within a matter of seconds and he found himself swimming to the top. And his partner grabbed him and pulled him out. And we realized right then and there that we weren't prepared. And so we went back, we checked out the varieties of equipment, talked to experts in the field on, you know, what the best things were. And we actually found this device to get somebody out in the event of emergency. A couple of other things we found out too, that the harnesses that they were wearing did not fit properly. And so they, they were really awkward for them to use. Because 99.9% of the time, nothing's going to happen in that hole. But yet they have to wear that harness. And so. You gotta have something that they can move around and perform their job.
Yeah, when, when this, we, we purchased this equipment because of that near miss. But the day after it happened to us, it happened in New Jersey and a guy drowned. And I don't know if you remember seeing that, but the municipal water department somewhere in New Jersey, guy died. That very same thing happened. So we were lucky here and we went out very soon afterwards and got the right.
Yes.
We also found in looking at that stuff, that the harnesses that they had, not only were, they were sharing them, but they weren't the proper ones. There's a different harness for fall, fall restraint than what there is for pulling somebody out. And the ones that we had were more for fall protection where these are more for pulling somebody up and that's their primary purpose.
Yeah, another thing that happens in confined space, you have air quality monitoring that has to occur because a lot of times when they open the lid. The air in there is toxic. So you actually have to check everything to make sure that, that it's right before you go down in. To make sure you're not breathing all the toxins. So one of the things that they do, they use these air monitoring and ventilation devices. The one on the far left would be one that they would put on a string and put in the hole. And if it, it would put out a sound and then they'll pull it up and check it and make sure that the air quality is good. If not. What they do is on the far right, they'll put a fan into the hole. You see that a lot at construction. Excuse me, around manholes at construction sites and such. And that's to free the air or to clean the air out in the hole. And then they were in the center, they wear the personal device on their chest. And so that way in the event that something goes bad or that air is toxic, it will start sounding a warning right there.
So also with the air monitoring system, the reason why we have the two different ones is like Jeff said, the first one is it. Actually checks for five different gases. The center one is a four gas and it actually hooks onto your equipment. So we have a calibrating system that hooks up to these and they're, they're charged every day after they come, after they use them. So that they're always fully charged. But we also have gas tanks that go with those so that they can check them each time to make sure that they're calibrated correctly. Because that's really important whenever you use those monitoring systems, that they're checking for all the gases properly. Every couple of years, every three years, we have the. Kansas Highway Patrol come in and do a AAA driver improvement course. This year we have started doing that. This year we have started doing that. We're not quite finished with it. We still have two more classes to do. But we have a trooper come in from there and she teaches this class and it's pretty much a most of all-day class. So it always has good information and even though it's basically the same class each time, there's always something that you learn that's, that's new from each one. I've sat through them for three different rounds of classes and I don't know how many classes each time. And I, every time that we do with them, I always pick, pick up something new out of them. So it's kind of nice to have those. So we started focusing a little more on reporting near misses. And it's reduced our work comp injuries. So instead of just having somebody report an injury to us and then we look into why that injury happened. We can also have people report near misses to us. And we can look into what caused that and is there any way that we can figure out how to reduce the hazard so that we get the hazard out? And they've been really good at this at Nierman Power. And I have to say, over the last few years, it's been really refreshing because our main objective is not to buy more personal protective equipment or not to buy more gadgets. It's to try to get rid of the hazard when we can. And so they've done a really good job at, of doing that at Nierman Power because they have looked at what will cause something. For instance, we had an instance where there was a valve on top of this piece of equipment. And to get to it, you had to climb up a ladder. You had to stand on a platform that was not a, it was a movable platform. So they're standing on that, they're reaching over it. And if you're somebody who's no taller than I am, that's really a reach. And you're turning this valve. And when you turn this valve, it's not just once or twice, we're talking a hundred times to get this valve turned. So if you're leaning over it and you're at a weird angle with it, you can see where that would cause some strain. And in our safety team meeting, some, as we were talking about this, somebody said, well, why does the valve have to be on top? Why can't it be on the side? And that was, that's how you engineer out the hazard, right? So we had the maintenance people come in, they moved that valve over to the side. So now instead of being at an awkward position, leaning across it, now you've got it standing right in front of you. And so that's more ergonomic. And so that reduced a lot of the back injuries, the shoulder injuries and that, just with that simple move. So by looking at stuff like that, whenever we get these near misses and work comp injuries, then we can look at those kinds of things. And we've also challenged our committees and our team members, our safety teams to go and do a walkthrough at each of their facilities and try to locate hazards and things that they can change before it turns into a near miss or even a work comp incident.
Another thing Dennis had talked about, we send out a safety topic every day. These are just a couple of the examples that we have trenching. The other just, you know, for being ergonomic when you're sitting at your desk. This is actually our employees. We try to use them anytime we can. This is out off of like four thirty-five in parallel. You can see it's pretty dangerous up in the wires, talks about the PPE and PPE selection. One thing that we did last year, we eliminated the losing your safety day. Unless you have some type of egregious violation or you cause an injury to another person that could have easily have been avoided, that would be the only way you'd lose your day. The reason that we did that is people were not reporting all the injuries. And when they don't report them, eventually something bad or catastrophic is going to happen. You gotta know that they're occurring so you can be proactive. In the event that they would lose their safety day, it goes to the safety committee, the HR department. And we will all sit down collectively and decide whether, you know, let them basically plead their case. Nierman Power, who was the worst last year, if you look in twenty twenty-two, they had eleven incidents that required medical attention and twenty-two near misses. This year so far, five incidents for medical attention, twelve near misses. And you can tell that it's, safety is just a priority out there. I was out there earlier today. They're on their forty-sixth day right now with no injuries. So it's a huge improvement. Now we can talk about some of the things that I know is near and dear to your heart, which is the dollars. And you look at it, two thousand and nineteen, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, twenty-two injuries. And I actually rated them from slip, trip and fall is our number one injury that we have. And then they go down the list as for number two, three, four, five, and so on. So if you look at two thousand and twenty-two, we had thirty-one injuries. And that cost is not static. It's constantly moving because you have injuries that will go on beyond the twelve-month period. So we spent three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven ninety-one. And if you look so far this year, our sixteen injuries, the severity of the injury is down. Five of those were bee stings, or I'm sorry, poison ivy. And then we had bee sting and then we had a spider bite. So the significance and the severity of the injury has gone down. And we've only spent sixty-seven thousand dollars so far this year. So it's a huge improvement. This, I wanted to just kind of show you at some of the risks that our folks have every day. So I'm going to buzz through these fairly quickly. But that's the wire that you see in this picture and that wire is about fourteen foot long. So you can imagine with the weight. This was going out to a job site. If you notice, this guy had all this PPE on, hard hat, gloves, FR shirt, he's, he's hooked into the bucket with his harness. These guys are working over turn diagonal with the speed limit being forty-five miles an hour while the trucks race below them. And they're installing a new traffic camera. These are kind of the unsung heroes, the ones that actually work to keep the cameras in sync and to keep the lights in sync, which is more important. This was a water main that had broke down in Armored Dale. And I never knew this until this guy jumped down there. They were actually sealed with lead years ago. And so he knew that when he saw the pipe and he started pounding the lead back in to get the leak down. So they were able to get the valve shut off, get the pipe drained and replace it. This was under Eighteenth Street Expressway. This was the biggest water job last year. And so far this year, you can tell it was pretty massive. It took a lot of people, a lot of time and a lot of money to do it. But they worked twenty-four hours a day until they got it finished, which I thought was really good. This is the new trucks. You can tell that the operator for the crane used to have to set up by the cab. And he would operate the crane, but his visibility of the people that he was delivering to on the ground was always kind of questionable. Now they're remote control. And I put that in there because it gives you a size of the, or an idea of the size of that pipe that they were working with. And one thing that goes on is teamwork and it's everywhere you look. All of these folks have to work as a team in order to get the job done. I was really proud of the carpenters on this. They replaced the road underneath Eighteenth Street after the job was finished. And I thought it was pretty impressive that our carpenters were out there and replaced. I, I don't even know how many yards of concrete, but I'm sure it was well over a hundred. You think about fly ash and you never think about fly ash being a rock. And this is a CDS out in Nierman Power. Unfortunately, when fly ash is combined with water and heat over a period of time, it turns into stone basically. And so they literally blast this stuff off the wall on the picture on your left. And you can see it turns into huge chunks. And so the risk of cleaning that out is extremely high.
The, the job that these two did with regard to that facility and the dangers that our people have going in there was really fantastic. You know, we, we got respirators for people that we didn't have before. Done air quality testing in there, just a number of safety hazards that this group and Nierman Power team removed from that situation, which is going to save us. I think, you know, a ton of injuries, but most importantly.
Definitely. Uh, one thing, returning the power after the storm. I know everybody wants their lights back on as soon as possible. The picture in the middle, you can see what our people walked into. That was around the pole. So they had to clear that out to get to the pole. And you can see the pole at the top is broken. So they had to replace two of them side by side. Setting new poles takes time. It's a lot of work, takes a lot of teamwork to get it together, but you can see it was a mess. I thought it was really good that day. There were two of the neighbors. These, these guys worked around to where they had jumped wires around. I'm not an electrician or lineman. But they had jumped wires around so they could minimize the number of houses that had lost power. And they could keep the mo, you know, they did what they could to keep the majority of homes powered up. And anyway, two of the neighbors yelled out and first one said, hey, I'm going to Quick Trip. Can I pick you guys up something? I thought it was very nice. And secondly, there was a lady that said, hey, how about I go get you some hamburgers and fries? And I thought, you know, that's, that's a satisfied customer. One thing that they have too is a backyard machine. So you don't have to tear all the fences down. And this machine can actually set a pole. You can see the pole on the far right was disaster. Lightning strike, if you look at that transformer, it hit that and blew the top off the transformer. And the transformers are filled with oil and so they had to get the lid back on that. And then hoist it down and it was put into a hazmat bag. Thankfully there was no leakage. The environmental team came out and we couldn't find anything out there. So they did a fantastic job. And you forget that people still climb poles. Our linemen are still up there. And we've, you know, I don't think they get the credit that they deserve. A lot of times they are first responders. And to the person that has their power or their water off, they are definitely the heroes. Have you ever wondered why a pole fails? It's because it narrows below the ground and of course the moisture gets in there and then the bugs get to it. How much of the pole's buried underground? I always wondered that. Ten percent of the length, and this my math was wrong. So the pole's forty-five foot tall. It would actually be buried six and a half foot deep. And you don't see this come out of the ground very often. They normally break. But when you're thinking about why a pole would break, I thought that was a pretty good example as to what's going on underground. Uh, so this is them replacing it back in. Now I'm going to run you through security real quick. We've increased our signage at all the facilities to reduce our liability and hopefully to keep people out of it. Uh, we've added the need to apparatus and with all the main gates, we actually have auto gates. And so if you have this sticker in your window, it will automatically open the gate for you. Uh, we have about four hundred and seventy cameras that we have in place now. Some of those were old where we hooked them up. We were able to incorporate them into the new network. We have two portable cameras. On these, you can tell this is at call power. You can see the gates. We can see the back of the facility and we can move it as needed. And we've had some issues at call with people breaking into the plant and stealing copper. Uh, we put the other one that's sitting at Quandero. Now we had a break-in in the building on the left about three weeks ago. Just minor, there really wasn't anything there. So we set the camera out. It's kind of like having a dog. You know, it will keep people away for the most part. They actually have infrared on them too, which is the far right camera. And so you can see a lot. Another thing we've done is we've put in cameras in the lobbies of every building for the safety and security of our people. We have entry cameras. The collector wells, these sit next to the river, there are two of them. The good part about this, the pump tenders have the same visibility. And so they can actually look at these and see if anything is wrong before they ever walk in the door. Uh, Nierman Water, these are the basins. We just got these cameras put in last year. We didn't have any pictures of that before. The chlorine room, which is very dangerous, a lot of liability in that and a lot of danger. Anyway, it takes a full face respirator, but we have great visibility of it. And once again, if anything were to go wrong, we can stop it. I shot the overhead just on Google Maps to show you how big those basins are. And that's a really large property. There's a, a children's psychiatric hospital down the hill from where Nierman Water is. And occasionally the kids will get out of there and it seems like they end up inside our fence frequently. So we really have to protect this facility and I think the cameras have been a huge plus. Mylan Pumping Station, these are all PTC cameras. They can move, they can go, you know, side to side, three hundred and sixty degrees. That's the Argentine seven million gallon reservoir, Fourteenth and Steel. The electric subs, I know this concerned everybody. Unfortunately, there's no real good answer to this. The subs keep the entrances to where you can have visibility of them. But if anybody has a high-powered rifle and has the advantage of a hill, there's, there's just not a lot you can do. We have good coverage at all the subs. And we actually have, people think of the main facilities, but we have sixty-five facilities in the company. So with that, you can see River View. This is where the bulk of our assets at, as far as wire goes. It's nothing for real to be eighty thousand dollars. So they're very expensive. So we have fantastic coverage of it, better than it's ever been. Service centers, same way. We've got the transformers on cameras, all the vehicles, the entryways. And Nierman Power. I always wondered, you ever wonder if the coal train was really full when they got out there? I thought, you know, to me, I call this the coal train verification picture right there, just to make sure, so we can actually see them dump. And so it, it's more safety than anything. And then it goes up the conveyor and they spray water on it to make sure that it doesn't combust. Oh, and the dozers, you don't realize how big they are until you put a car next to it. And these were put in for safety. Now we can tell if coal was falling off of the belts. If there's a fire, if there's smoldering coal, uh, without having to send somebody up there. So it's a huge advantage. The same way in the five KV room and the four eighty rooms. If anything would go on, you can see it all prior to. This is one of my favorites. This is the top of Nierman Power. And instead of having to send somebody up there to make sure that the pipes are exhausting properly. Now we have cameras up there so they're not having to go up ten stories to get there. It's a very dangerous climb. Uh, we actually improved the access control, Nierman Power. We put them on all these doors. People would go outside and you didn't have any idea who was coming or going. They'd leave the doors open. This is just an example of me for one, you know, one morning coming in and it shows you everywhere I used my card, everywhere I pulled into a gate. And so it does that for everybody. So if you go into a facility and you use that card to scan, it tells exactly who it was, what time they got there and what time they left. So I think that's one of the huge benefits. If you look on the left, that's, that's what you get sometimes with guard services. It's the nature of the beast. Yeah, I was that guy. Uh, so anyway, we took these little stickers, these are GPS. And so every one of them is identified. We have five hundred of them or a little over five hundred. And so now the guards, when they're on duty, they actually have to go and they have to, they have to hit these with their cell phone. And it draws a map showing where they've been. So we know that we're getting exactly what we're paying for. Our next major project, which is in the process right now, we're doing key control. You know, it's a, it's another huge liability issue. Eventually we'll have three hundred and seventy-four vehicles on it. And the key control has a couple of really big benefits. You can tell what time the key was taken out of the cabinet. Employee will scan their card and they will designate specifically what truck that employee is going to take that day. And so the key lights up in the cabinet, you take it, the key is GPS. And so it gives us even more technology to know where the equipment is. And the best part about it is from a cost perspective is if you're under utilizing that equipment, you'll be able to tell very quickly. Or you may have equipment that you're over utilizing to where you had other equipment to put in its place. It's good too, because you can take the employee's clock time and compare it against the exit time at the gate and the time they pulled the key out of the cabinet. So if you really want to get into the productivity of people, that's one way to do it. Uh, I wanted to show you the Guarda World bills as Dennis had talked about some of the savings. I just pulled a couple at random. February sixteenth of last year, we were spending about forty thousand a week. That's a weekly bill, not a monthly, unfortunately. And now we're down to about thirty-one thousand a week. So we've had a significant cost savings across the board. And we still have some opportunities where we'll cut. On the technology side of it, the cost of the technology, if you look in the second to the left column, you'll see these were just kind of estimates. Some we ran over a little bit, some we were under on, but we spent about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in technology. And if you look in the third column under the guard savings that produced five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar savings or times five years would be two million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. And you can look at the simple math next to it, the number of guards eliminated and those are actually the hours times the number of days. So anyway, to sum it all up, security costs are down by about five hundred and forty-eight thousand a year. times the number of days. So anyway, to sum it all up, security costs are down by about five hundred and forty-eight thousand a year. Work cop claims are down forty-one percent. Work cop costs are down eighty-two percent. The number of backing crashes down eighty-nine percent. The number of vehicle accidents are down by seventy-two. And our spending on technology this year was only a fraction of what we had last year. So it was down about seventy percent. The great part of it is, is the overall employee safety and security has improved dramatically. Uh, our guard service is much more efficient than they were in the past. The good part of this too is employee participation is up because the safety committees and all the safety interaction and that goes for direct uh, job satisfaction improvement, which is as they become more involved, you become more satisfied with the job that you have when you have input in it. So that's pretty much it. In a nutshell, sorry it took so long. My apologies. Uh, but thank you for your time. Greatly appreciate it. Teresa.
Thank you very much.
Hey, hey Jeff, I've, I've got a que, first of all, thank you guys very much for that. That's a, that's pretty impressive work. It, the, you guys looking at putting cameras, uh, dashboard cameras in the vehicles?
You know, we have talked about it. It's, you know, employees find it very invasive. And if they're facing out, coming from a company that had them, there's a lot of benefit to it. I think it's something that between Jeremy, Bill and the board that you guys should discuss. There's, there's a lot of good that comes out of it.
I'm not sure if Evergy has gone to that across their fleet, but I think they have. And I think they're, they're probably happy they did.
My, I, I think seldom do you find a company that was not real happy about the findings and it it, it keeps people honest and in the event of a crash, boy, the liability that it can save is, is tremendous. So.
And our, our static cameras and uh, that we, that we added, police department loves those um as well. So we've helped them solve a couple of major issues because, you know, we have those in our facilities. When the gunshots rang out at Muncie, they, first thing they did was watch those videos and they caught the guys and have the evidence now. So it still serves a lot.
Well, and I have to believe Maurice is maybe one of the happiest people uh in the company for everything you guys have done. So great job. Thank you very much.
Uh, and it started too before I got here and we just took the ball and, and just kept carrying it. So, you know, thanks to Dennis uh, for allowing us to do a lot of this stuff because without, without a boss that lets you do your job, it's impossible to get it done.
That's right. Well, thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hold on, Jeff.
Oh, go ahead, David.
No, just really a comment and a brief question. Uh, just wanted to augment that just in, in incredibly impressive. Um, looking at, for example, not to pick anyone, that slip and fall, that slip and fall rate from where, where you were and where you got. And so congratulations on that and, and where we move uh, and the tech, what the technology is doing. So are these industry standards? I mean, you mentioned, or uh, Rose mentioned um, that whatever G has done, are we seeing these trends or have you, or do we track outside of what we're doing um, from that standpoint? I mean, are we, are we leading the, the pack for uh, as hopefully we might be for what's happening in the industry around? Are we learning from them or, or perhaps can they learn from us?
I'm hoping they're going to learn from us. So I, you know, I don't know about Evergy. I, I come from an industry that had a lot of, a lot of technology in it. And so therefore the benefit outweighs the cost just tremendously in every arena. And in today's world, unfortunately, you need that technology to protect you in a lot of cases and protect your employees. So I, I, it's a good question, David. It's something that I need to dig into, but I bet you we're, we're in the top ten percent.
Yeah, especially when it comes to municipal utilities, I think we're definitely I don't want to say the leading edge, but we, we're definitely near the top. You know, one of the reasons that we brought Jeff in from UPS was they're known for their safety and security and their private sector, and they really have a lot of infrastructure they've invested in. That's where we want to get to um, as a company. And then as we catch up, you know, be leaders of the pack, but we're getting there.
Right. And these are ours. Um, do we incorporate some of these numbers for our subs or for the contractors that we have? Or are they an outside consideration, like capital or whatever? Do we look at any of their numbers or?
I, we don't really look at their numbers, but it gives us the ability to track them coming in and working in our facilities. And I, you know, I think that's equally as important. We can, when capital, uh, you can take them and ask one and we actually tag their trucks. So they have the access to a facility, but we know what time asked one came in. We know what time the truck came in. We know they're working on the weekends. So there's a lot of benefit to it.
That was my next question. You, you knew where else. Great. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the uh, agenda is utility rebate program. I'll ask Andrew to come up and ask for uh, approval on resolution fifty-two eighty-nine.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, board, yes, I am asking for approval of resolution number five-two-eight-nine. Resolution authorizing a low income rebate program. Whereas the elected board desires to establish a low income rebate program to assist the elderly and the disabled with the increased rate. And whereas the elected board recognizes that efficiencies and consistency would be gained utilizing the unified government low income senior and disabled rebate program requirements and screening. And whereas the elected board wishes to provide initial funding in a budgetary cap in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand for the period of September one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the elected board wishes to provide a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month to electric only customers for a combined electric rebate and water rebate credit of seven dollars per month from September one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four for eligible BPU account holders and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Public Utilities to the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, that the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities hereby establishes a low income rebate program to assist the elderly and disabled with the rate increase. BPU will accept all BPU customers that are recipients of the Unified Government Senior Rebate Program for the applicable time period. An initial funding and budgetary cap in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand is hereby set for the period of September one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. A monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month to electric only customers or combined electric rebate and water rebate credit of seven dollars per month from September one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four will be provided to eligible BPU account holders for the full rebate cycle or until the cap of a hundred and fifty thousand is reached. Only one credit will be applied per month and credit shall only be applied to residential accounts where the account holder is a resident. The general manager is directed and authorized to establish and update additional rules and policies as necessary to carry out the program objectives.
This is Rose. Um, I'm going to move to approve resolution five-two-eight-nine with the following revisions. Um, I, I, the, the first revision would be for us to name the program. It is not currently named. So I'd like to name it the BPU Low Income Rebate Program. Um, so that would be in the first whereas clause. Uh, this, the second revision would be in the second whereas clause. Uh, then the second line, the P in program needs to be capitalized. And then the third revision would be down in the body of the actual resolution. On the third line down, uh, there are some missing uh, there's some missing words from the actual unified government program name. So I would add uh, to rename the program properly, which is the entire name is the Unified Government Low Income Senior and Disabled Rebate Program. And so as revised, I would move to approve resolution five-two-eight-nine.
This is Jeff. I second.
Uh, the resolution five-two-eight-nine as uh proposed to be revised has been moved in second and roll call please.
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board. On the miscellaneous comments, I know uh, all of you, I think, received the email. Uh, I'm not sure who sent it to you, but uh, Friday, September eighth will be the groundbreaking ceremony for downtown kickoff for the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Uh, it's called Kansas City Community Education Health and Wellness Center Groundbreaking Ceremony. So if you're planning on attending, you let Chris know. I'm not sure if we need to let them know. We do give them a list of who's, who's attending from the utility. And then final thing I uh, would like to say is on August twenty-first of this year, Jeff Bryant will be celebrating another birthday. So happy birthday, Jeff. And on September third of this year, Mary Gonzalez will be celebrating another birthday. Happy birthday, Mary. Madam President, that's all I have. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, we'll move on to uh, board comments. Uh, Senator Haley, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly um, want to first um, thank the, thank um, presentations we had this evening. Most informative, most enlightening. Very much appreciate what we had on the uh, safety update. And I'm pleased to see that the um, u-utility rebate uh, program did, did pass to offset so hopefully for some, the rate increase that uh, passed last uh, last month. Um, also to wish um, our fellow members, um, um, Jeff and Mary, uh, the very best in this next uh, next cycle around the sun. Happy birthday to both of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Uh, Mr. Groneman, do you have any comments this evening?
I, I just want to say I, I found that the HR uh, safety and security update was excellent. Uh, I, the, the results that's, that you've shown in the last uh, over the last year is astounding and, and keep up the good work. Really appreciate it. Appreciate what you're doing. And I know the employees, the employees too. Uh, and other than that, uh, I also like to say that uh, I'm happy that the first phase or the first part of the utility rebate program is uh, going to go into, to uh, being and, and I'm sure that we'll revisit it uh, and make sure that we pick up on other areas that need to be addressed. But this is starting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Groneman. Mr. Mylan.
Yes, uh, thank you, safety. Um, presentation. One word that was missing, that is the safety is our number one priority. So that's most important. Keep that in mind because that's why we all appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Mr. Bryant?
Um, yeah, thank you for the presentation tonight. Um, safety should be a given and, and uh, it is well appreciated. Um, and to the other staff that worked on the utility rebate uh, program, getting it turned in such a short period of time, I thank you for indulging us with the uh, with the pressure that we put on you and I look forward to more discussion on how we can uh, move forward with this into next year as the UG changes their specifications. Other than that, I will not be in attendance. Uh, at the next meeting, I will be uh, celebrating a birthday and an anniversary. So.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'd also like to thank everybody that worked on the rebate program and put that together so quickly. Um, and also to the safety um, committee and Dennis and Teresa and Jeff, thank you so much for your presentation. Usually um, I like to say our employees are they're, they're our biggest asset and everybody knows them because they live in your neighborhood or around the corner or down the street from you. So keeping our employees safe is paramount and I appreciate all you do in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. I'll just echo the, the other board member comments from this evening. And, and one thing I want to highlight in particular is um, you know, Bill, thank you for the update on your meeting with uh, Charisse Davids and the other folks um, from the greater uh, greater part of the metropolitan area. I, I certainly hope that um, the unified government and BPU are able to take advantage of uh, the Inflation Reduction Act funds that are be available to us and, and I hope we can work with the other um, folks throughout the metropolitan area to take advantage of this because I think we're a community that's in dire need. Um, so hopefully we can get there on that. So thank you for the update on that and we'll look more forward to more information on that. Uh, and that is, that's all I have this evening.
So we do have, we will have a motion, um, but I need help with math first. So how long of a break do you all want to take or do you want to take a break? Five minute break. Okay. That's what I thought. And how many minutes do you want the executive session?
We uh, can we recommend twenty-five minutes? Thirty, thirty minutes.
And then what, we will resume at what time then?
At seven forty-five.
Okay. The proposed motion for adoption is as follows. I move that after taking a five minute break, the board go into executive session in the first floor boardroom for thirty minutes to discuss confidential matters related to an update on labor negotiations pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five dash three nineteen B three, and that the general manager, William Johnson, chief administrative officer Lori Austin, council Wendy Green, director of human resources Dennis Dumovich, chief op, chief operating officer Jeremy Ash, and outside counsel Ryan Dink be present to participate in the discussion. All others to be dismissed from the room and electronic and telephonic transmission cease and that we reconvene in open session with electronic and telephonic transmission resuming at seven forty-five PM to either take action or adjourn.
Uh, board, I would like to add, add uh, uh, action call to the meeting.
With that addition, I move to approve.
I second. This is Rose.
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
This is Jeff. Move to adjourn.
It's been moved in second and roll call please.
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you.